All right, it's now 1:00 P.M., so we're going to get started. Thanks, everybody, for joining us for the 2021 Top Energy Performing School Boards Report launch. I know people are still trickling in, but we want to go ahead with the webinar. I'm Katia Osukin. I'm the Sustainable Schools Program Manager. And the presentation today will be done by Ian Jarvis, the Executive Director of the Climate Challenge Network. And I'll pass this over to Ian to get us started.
Yes, thank you, Katia, and good afternoon, everybody in the east, and good morning to everybody joining us from the western part of North America. And happy you're able to join us as we reveal the top energy performing school boards in Ontario for 2021. And we'll provide more details as we go along. Thanks, as always, to the I S O and Enbridge Gas for their support of sustainable schools. And we also acknowledge that the Ministry of Energy, Northern Development and Mines, that collects and manages the publicly reported data for school boards and all other public institutions in Ontario. Without your work, none of this would be possible, so thanks for all that you do. Also, appreciation to Armstrong Fluid Technology as the sponsor for this particular webinar. And I'll come at the end of the webinar to a little bit more about industry engagement with this ongoing progression towards low carbon and ultimately net zero in buildings. So by way of background, if those who weren't with us last year have forgotten, Climate Challenge Network is a nonprofit corporation founded in 2019. And it's an umbrella group that contains a number of large-scale sectoral programs where multiple owners collaborate in sharing data and advancing the big issue of scaling up greenhouse gas emissions associated with buildings. Climate Challenge Network has a North American mandate, and we're presenting today on the school sector in Ontario. But there's comparable work going on in other building sectors, healthcare, municipalities, and others, and increasingly coming from North America wide. So that's who is behind this work today. Again, we've touched on our appreciation for the program sponsors and the Ministry of Energy, Northern Development and Mines, and Technical Direction, as I think most people know, is provided by the good engineering folks at N L F Consulting. So this is our group, our agenda today that we'll work through. And what I would ask is, any questions or comments you may have? Please enter them in the Q and A section there. We are monitoring that box and will pause at different points in the program to field questions that belong within this particular conversation. And if there are questions that are better responded to more fulsomely after the webinar, we will do that, too. But our four areas of interest today. First, we want to obviously get through the results, which is why most people are connected in today. And the results, as we track the energy use across the almost 5,000 schools in Ontario, we're able to track both actual savings achieved from year to year and also measure the achievable savings potential that's left to be had. So we'll talk a bit more about that. But those are the two focuses. How much are we actually progressing? And what is the potential for additional energy and emissions and utility cost savings on a go-forward basis? And then if we had a Zoom drum roll, we would run that out for the recognition of the top performing boards for 2021. And following that, we'll give you a bit of an update on the methodology behind this. It's all published within a white paper, so we'll share as to where you can find that. If you're as intrigued as we are with the data metrics and adjustments and everything else that get made. Then the highlight for us of this event every year is the Q and A session with a panel of the high-performing boards to essentially dig a little deeper into what is it about the way they manage their boards, about their facilities, that leads to exceptional energy efficiency results? In some cases, year after year, and in other cases, really significant improvements since last time we did this with you a year ago. And finally, I wanted to step back and talk a bit about outcomes. Sustainable Schools doesn't do this just to be the scorekeeper. We also intend to play a role to accelerate progress, to help the boards take further action to increase the savings of their recording. So I'll give you a bit of a sense of where Sustainable Schools has been over the past 12 months and what our plans are going forward. So the top boards report, the information, the data that you'll see today come from the 2018-19 school year. And as mentioned before, they come from the Ontario Ministries of Energy's collection of data for the broader public sector, for all parts of the broader public sector within the province of Ontario. The data on, the supplementary data that we use on the schools, like portable classrooms, type of heating system, and so on, that comes from a survey that we conducted earlier this year, and thanks to the 40 boards that responded. And the principle of all of this is the ranking. When you see the number one, two to 20 school boards in a moment, they're ranked by their total energy savings potential. So the electricity and thermal energy, most of which is natural gas, combined. So that is the dataset on which the report is built. And as I mentioned previously, as we track the energy and weather data and changes in the schools from year to year, we can also keep track of actual savings achieved. So here you see the percentage province-wide across all school boards of savings achieved in 2016-17, and then again, last year in 2017-18, and this year for the 2018-19 year, in each case measured against the previous year. So in some ways, these are cumulative. Last year was a decent year for electricity savings at 1.4%. For natural gas savings, it was a disappointing year. We are after adjustments for whether we actually fell back a little bit in terms of overall gas use across the province. So overall, it's kind of a break even, so somewhat positive trending, but still a lot of room for improvement in terms of really digging into the savings potential that we'll share with you in just a moment. The savings potential, again, I'm not going to get too deeply into the methodology here, but we've essentially, from this large dataset, established top quartile target metrics for electricity and natural gas in every individual building. We separated administrative buildings from secondary schools, from elementary schools, so they all have their own set of targets. And very simply, the savings potential is comparing actual electricity and gas use per square foot to the weather-normalized targets adjusted to the weather station closest to each of the individual buildings. So this is a rational way of taking the whole dataset, comparing it to standardized targets, adjusting for key variables, and then presenting the overall savings potential that arises from that. So every single building within this survey has its own target savings. And for each individual board, the target savings are rolled up for all of the buildings within that board. And for the province as a whole, the 72 school boards are rolled up together. So this presents the 72 school boards, their savings potential. The blue is their electricity savings potential. The green is their thermal energy, again, mostly natural gas savings potential. And that is the core premise behind this. Again, we'll talk a bit more about the methodology in a moment. But this is all about savings potential, where you can see here the top boards are close to 40. Sorry, the biggest savings potential is in the 40% to 50% range. And the most efficient boards are around 10% to 15% remaining savings potential across all of their buildings. When we take all of that and put it into one banner headline, these are the crucial numbers that come out of that. Overall, across every school building in the province, including their administration buildings, there's potential for 27% reduction in electricity, a 35% reduction in natural gas, a reduction of $117 million a year in utility costs, and a reduction of 244,000 tons of greenhouse gas emissions if every building in the province reaches the top quartile, good-practice, target level that has been established from this dataset. So 25% of the buildings within the dataset are already performing at or above this level. All of this presumes is that we can bring all of the other buildings up to that level. This is seen as being a readily attainable target with cost-effective retrofits and good operational practices. So this is the big number for the year. And next, we need the Zoom drum roll, which we don't have. But if we did it with sound now, because, excuse me. The presentation is so excited, it's not letting me move forward. Here are the, here are top 20 school boards for the 2021 year, again, based on the 2018-19 school year of data. So I'll pause for a moment as people kind of collect their thoughts and find themselves on this chart or don't find themselves in the chart. So these are the top 20. The other 52 boards all have their own rankings. And as we'll refer you to at the end, we're happy to share the profiles of each of the individual boards with you on request. Just drop us an email, and we'll send you the more detailed profile for your particular board. I'm happy to have a conversation with you about what that information means. But the three most improved boards are the ones that have been good enough to join us for the panel discussion a bit later. The Ottawa Catholic School Board having progressed from number three to number one over the past 12 months. So they were ranked number three last year, they're ranked number one this year. The Holton Catholic District School Board has progressed from number 12 to number four this year. So that is our other one of the most improved. And Bruce Gray Catholic District School Board, Catholic School Board, which you'll see number 12 within there, has progressed from number 21 last year. So significant advancements. And say, our interest is not just directly in the data, but in what the data tell us, and providing context for a thoughtful conversation about what are the retrofits? What are the management practices? What are the operational improvements that the board showing the biggest savings are following and that others can consider for their own school board operations? So again, congratulations to our top 20 for this year. And again, you'll see the formal acknowledgement of these on our website later today, where the report and the updated white paper and other material from the last 12 months, they're being posted today, so they're available to you if you wish to go and look at them more closely. So just quick methodology update. This year, we had a total of 4,684 buildings that we subjected to this analysis. If you're, again, if you're interested in the details within the white paper, which is the front cover, which you can see on the right-hand side there, and you'll find it after the webinar today on the sustainableschools.ca website. Tells you all about data screening, which data issues did we screen out from the analysis? Looks at how we set the standard targets for all buildings and then adjusts those targets for specific variables between buildings, including weather, but also building-specific factors. The methodology for estimating savings, all of that is laid out in some detail. The Climate Challenge Network approach is always, there's no black boxes here. Our intention is always to be transparent. And frankly, this will sound strange to you, but we love hearing back from people critiquing or questioning the methodology, because that's generally where our improvements come from. We're always revisiting this methodology. We update the targets from year to year, and it's very much a living document where we welcome people's thoughts and comments. Let me, before we get to the Q and A, give you one more piece of the analytics that we've developed a lot further this year, and that's around understanding savings, energy savings and energy increases in large portfolios of buildings. So we've been intrigued with this for some time now. This is the first time we've taken this very large dataset and really sorted it to look at every one of the individual buildings and flag them out. So what you see on the left-hand side of the electricity chart on the left and the gas chart on the right is all the schools that despite best efforts, actually, the energy use, having adjusted for weather, the energy use actually went up in the most recent, in the 2018-19 year compared to the prior year. On the right-hand side, you see the equivalent of the energy of all the buildings where the energy use improved, where energy savings were achieved. And in the middle, those little numbers, they're the ones that didn't change by more than plus or minus 5%. So the net savings of electricity you see on the left-hand chart on the right is the, is the, is a little over 20 million kilowatt-hours. The net savings of gas was actually negative. So again, overall, across the province, the gas consumption actually increased, where the increase is associated with the orange schools and buildings more than offset the savings achieved by the green ones. So running through this big story, we believe that this is extremely important, not just in terms of school boards, but in terms of portfolios of buildings everywhere, where left unattended, building energy use will tend to rise. So in other words, key equipment like dampers and valves fail, programming fails, people override controls, all kinds of things are working against maintaining energy-efficient performance over time. And the, if you like, the relationship for any individual board. So there's, this profile exists for every one of the school boards in the province of how many of your schools showed increases and how many showed savings, what the net was for your individual board, and it's the percentages of buildings in each of those categories that we find intriguing, not as much as a statement of technology or of retrofits or projects or investment, but a statement of management systems and how effectively, with these huge numbers of schools many of you are dealing with, how effectively you're able to stay on top of the data and both manage savings and projects and improvements in buildings, but perhaps more importantly, avoid the increases in others. And that's going to be the focus of our conversation with the panel in a moment. But the big story here is for electricity. That bar in the middle, 2,092 of the buildings in question didn't change. They were within plus or minus 5% of the prior year. The ones to the left increased, the ones to the right made savings. And the overall effect you can see in the bullets. 1,270 facilities in total saved 70 million kilowatt-hours. Another 1,050 increased, they're used by 49 million kilowatt-hours. So we lost what, 70% of the savings achieved to the creeping up of energy use in other buildings. On the natural gas side, even more concerning, 1,343 buildings achieved 17.5 million cubic meters of gas savings. Another 1,385, a few more recorded increases greater than 5% that not only offset the whole 17.5 million, but actually cost the province overall 2 million cubic meters of gas. This, touch on it towards the end, this for us is a key area of ongoing research. Again, not into technologies and control systems and projects, but into management practices that support high performance across, again, large and complex portfolios of buildings. So let's, actually, I'm going to pause for a moment here. Gillian, are there any questions that have been posted? And if anybody has questions in mind from this background that we presented to date the story so far, before we get into the Q and A session, please, if you have questions, post them now. And again, some of them we'll do with after the webinar. But if there are any that, Gillian, you think will help qualify the conversation so far, please. Can you read them out to us now?
There's one around, and maybe for the panel to keep in mind as they do their presentations, because I think it's quite specific to some of our big saving boards. What are some of the specific methodologies that we use to reach and achieve these goals? Technology, process, data, et cetera? So great to ask the question in advance, because then all of our wonderful panel can answer them during their presentation.
Excellent. Okay, so gentlemen, are you ready? So just, again, delighted, and we are very conscious of how busy school boards are at the moment for obvious reasons that we're not going to dwell into here. So, you know, first of all, thanks to everybody who's taken the time to be, to attend the webinar today. But thanks in particular to Al and Paul and Steve and Ryan for taking the extra time to both meet with us last week and talk about the story behind the story so that we could begin to answer the question that Gillian just posed. And your willingness to engage in this forum with a back and forth, because the value in these sessions in the past has been, if you like, the immediate answer from the individual boards and then the willingness of other boards to pick up on themes and so on. But let me start, because all of this is grounded in the data. Like, it's the data that drives the bus here. It asks the questions that we're going to be seeking answers from, from Al, Paul, and Steve and Ryan. But here are the profiles of their boards. So again, Bruce Gray improved from 21 ranking to 12 this year. If you look at the top row there, the increases, they didn't, on electricity, they didn't see any. And there were, there were some of their 14 schools that showed the 14.3% that showed small gas increases. So all three of the boards, if you look at those first three columns, the increases are very small compared to the provincial averages down below. So look at each one of these in contrast with 1.2% of all the schools and all the buildings within the survey recorded bigger than 50% increases in electricity use and 2.6%, bigger than 50% increases in natural gas. Obviously, that little cluster, the third column in there, almost 20% of the buildings recorded 5% to 20% rises in electricity use, and almost a quarter of them, more than a 5% increase in natural gas. So these boards first are characterized by managing, avoiding increases in energy use. And then you can see the savings numbers on the right-hand side. We haven't color-coded them, because otherwise it becomes really hard to follow. But you can see exactly the same information there, significantly above the provincial average in terms of how many of their schools they recorded savings in. And we're going to dig a bit deeper in the moment. And not all of those savings are associated with projects. So what are the management practices that they follow that allow them to make incremental improvements? And similarly, within natural gas. And you can see the overall remaining targeted savings potential in the far-right column for electricity. The provincial average is 27%. That's the number we looked at previously. This is where three boards, these three boards lie. And for gas, the provincial average is 35.5%, and this is where those boards lie. So we think this is important, because that's the context, if you like. In some ways, these are the credentials, the folks who are talking to us today, that they're substantially beating the average, and they're beating the average by doing things that others may not be doing. And their generosity today is in sharing their time to talk about what some of those things might be with the understanding that none of us has all the answers. And all of this is going to be subject to the ongoing research and conversations that we have. And I promise you, there'll be a lot more to say about this a year from now when we have the next report. But Al, even though I'm not sure you're comfortable about going first, I'm going to put you first anyway. The big savings that you managed to retrieve, from 21 to 12, that 50% of your schools saved between 5% and 20% of electricity. So that doesn't feel, it's just been 5% and 20%. This doesn't feel like necessarily big retrofit projects. 57% of your schools saved, say, between 5% and 20%. In fact, 2/3 of your schools made savings last year. If you step back from the big picture, what is your overall sense about what is it that's making you successful there at Bruce Gray that you want to share with people? And then we'll kind of pick up on those themes as we move forward.
Yeah, good afternoon, thank you, Ian. The big item for us is we had a major philosophy change around energy conservation in our thought process. Just to take a step back, so everybody understands we're a small board, but we do have 100% building automation. We can monitor that centrally. So for us, anytime we implement a project or my daily management item, we are constantly looking at the B A S, and we're critiquing any changes made to the set points. And then that is triggering us to have conversations with the individuals around why there would be a change. That's probably the simplest answer. There's no real silver bullet, but that's what we've been, we've been working on.
So just to keep you for a second on this one, Albi, I was kind of intrigued with the relationships. As you described the relationships you have with the caretakers in the schools, when we discussed this last week, could you give us a sense of, do they hate you? Are you a big brother overlooking them and trying to catch them out? Or is it a more collegial kind of approach where you're in it together?
Yeah, it's interesting you mention that. We do, we have a pretty good relationship with the caretakers. I don't have a, so the caretakers report directly to myself, because we're small. So we're able to be agile and shift quickly. Usually, it's not the caretaker that themselves want to make a change. It's usually they're getting pressure from staff in the school. So we generally assist the caretakers. We'll go on site and we'll meet with the principal and sometimes have some really difficult conversations around why our set points are what they are and educate the school staff around, you know, why is that important? What does it mean if we increase something without reason?
Okay, that's really helpful. This human side of this is always intriguing to us, because we always think of energy efficiency as technology. But Paul, moving on to Ottawa Catholic for a second, the same kind of question that you regained the top spot when we had the first report, which was not every school board in the province. Ottawa Catholic was at number one. You're back to the top there. You've got, and again, the profile is very clear there in terms of savings. Even though you're already one of the most efficient boards, you've still recorded 18% of your schools coming in with between 5% and 20% electricity savings. And more than 1/3 of your schools showing similar results on gas savings. Same question for you, if you were to step back to the big picture, where is your success coming from?
Well, first of all, thank you very much. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak to the group. And certainly, it's exciting news to find out that we are, we're scored very well in the province. You know, we can build on that. You know, it builds towards our culture. We've tried to establish a culture of energy conservation for many, many years now. We started our first program probably back in 2005. And I'm speaking in replacement of our operations and energy conservation officers on holidays. Jerry Sankarchi, with many people on here might be familiar with. So Jerry started a program back in 2005. And really, it's, we built on that. It's established a culture in our organization. We have representation on school boards. Environmental committee, so we start there. We're dealing directly with principals and superintendents. Trustees have taken an interest in energy conservation. So we're able to deliver a fairly clear and concise message to all of the users. We do have a program where our caretakers are able to operate the buildings. They set schedules, they do set points. We have about 60% building automation, but we monitor it centrally, but we're not controlling it centrally. The caretakers have operational guidelines that are provided to them. As long as they're following within the guidelines that we've put out, they're able to raise more set points, set schedules according to comfort levels. So we try to deliver a message that everybody needs to buy in. And, you know, we're big on teaching, you know, lights out when you're not in the classroom. We have signage up for that. We have We have, we have a blackout program at night where, you know, 15 minutes after the last person leaves, all the exterior lights are off. And in in conjunction with that, we have invested heavily through capital renewal as well. So, you know, in the in the 1718 fiscal year, we spent $5 million on roof replacements, you know, upgrading insulation on those to R31. As a standard, we spent $1 million on lighting retrofits, both interior and exterior lighting. We had four large boiler plants replaced in in that fiscal year. So we see the savings for those in in 2018 school year and our largest children in the board replaced that year as well. So I think that certainly might have put us from three to one, what would have been our capital investments. But also during that period of time, we've increased the square footage of the school that's air conditioned. We have cooling centers in all of our buildings now, whether it be a gymnasium or a learning commons or chapel or central area that can be used. Obviously, the temperatures are rising outside, so we have increased our air condition square footage. And we continue to grow as well. We opened a new elementary school in 2018. We put a large addition on last year. We're building two more elementary schools in the upcoming year. So, you know, we continue to grow and we continue to invest in in energy savings. We participated in a couple of design charrettes with the Enbridge Company where we come in, our architects are involved, our school board, project officers. And we go through different scenarios of how to achieve top performance in in school design. So that, you know, it's done a year in advance of the school actually started construction. So, you know, those those investigations have proven beneficial because we can also take that that knowledge and transfer into our renewal program. So all of those things, I think, have helped us to to deliver a well-built school and certainly hopefully a well-operated school.
So Paul, you were particularly successful in in natural gas savings. To what extent, just off the top of your head, you can see the numbers involved, right? Like the overall close to 40%, I guess around 40% of your schools achieved gas savings last year. How much of that would you do you think was due to a few renewal projects? And again, we're talking about 2018, 19 versus 2017, 18. Renewal projects versus just your caretakers being reminded on a regular basis and having a real interest in making the adjustments and making the improvements to move things forward. So where would you, where do you think the savings came from? From capital projects or from operations?
When I see the number of schools that achieve savings, I don't think it's all from capital investments. I think operational practices are probably the leading contributor to what we see. We, you know, we have a program that's been in place for many, many years where we do monthly media readings with our caretakers. So the caretakers read the hydrometer and the gas meter monthly. They enter the data into the spreadsheet and and we've trained them to keep a watch out for changes that may be an anomaly that they need to look into. So those, if they see something ordinary, they report it right away. We have regular meetings with our board HVAC technicians, our operations officers, our energy manager. And we have spreadsheets that we present to the group and we and we show the indicate the schools aren't performing well. And in most cases, it involves a visit to the school by the HVAC technician. Sometimes Jerry Sankarchi accompanies them and they speak to the caretaker about about schedules and set points and we get things turned around, hopefully quicker than we would if we just waited for the utility information to come from from the invoice and then deal with that. We try to address things as quick as we can. So if we have something that maybe is overridden on or the automation system has failed and things are running 24/7, we know about it. You know, at the most, within 30 days and we're able to address it and get things turned around in the right direction. So hopefully that's, you know, how we how we're able to prevent increases. And then the operational practices that are regularly reinforced, I think, are what are leading to the savings that we see.
That's really helpful. And Steve and Ryan at Holton Catholic, the again, you've got a pretty decent sized board, 57 schools there. You improve from number 12 to number four. The you're one of the most efficient, electrically efficient school boards in the province with 16% savings potential. But you had kind of a banner year there, like 42%, I guess 46% in total of your schools showed significant electricity savings. And again, I think from the conversation last week, some of that was around retrofits, but the sense is there's more going on there than that. What are the kinds of standards and board practices that you have? And the same question, how much of this would you attribute to capital investment versus just board-wide smart operations?
Thanks, Ian. Maybe I'll start and then Steve can jump in with some more details. But I think similar to Al and Paul, there has been a lot of investment over the past number of years. It's kind of been a bit of the heyday of capital for renewal investment across the province. But when we look at the numbers, the improvements across way too many schools to be just just capital renewal. So similar to them, there's been a lot of renewal works, but also all of our building automation systems are tied back centrally. So we can control them from from a single point, which definitely helps us kind of operate all of our buildings efficiently. We are, we are very fortunate in Holton Catholic being a high-growth area that we do have a lot of newer schools. But it also comes with challenges as well. We're, you know, 99.5% of our of our floor area in our buildings is air-conditioned. So we only have, I think we have three gyms now across the entire board that aren't air-conditioned and every other piece of our school is. So definitely create some challenges for us, running our buildings efficiently and having those building automation systems tied back centrally definitely helps us there. And then we also do utility monitoring. So we have real-time utility monitoring across all of our schools now. I know Steve was pretty instrumental in getting that up and running back in, you know, 2015 to 2017 range. And a lot of, you know, kind of legwork, getting that thing rolled out across all of our schools. And it's actually unfortunate that, you know, your analysis here doesn't include water as well because our water numbers are spectacular as well. I've seen a ton of improvement in water usage. So it's been, you know, a really good journey seeing the conservation side of things. And then lastly, maybe just before I turn it off to Steve, on the on the engagement side, I know Paul talked about, you know, engaging your your facility staff in your schools. We're also trying to reach out to our occupants as well and try and engage them. Again, on the project that that Steve worked on was really rolling out our energy management TVs. So every entrance to every school has a, you know, a big, you know, 42 or 50 inch TV as you walk in on top of various kind of school messages that we put in there. The reason we put them out, we've we used a kind of savings money that we had from energy projects and we have put our energy data on there as well. So and we try and drive a bit of competition. You can see how you rank, how your school ranks against other schools and try and, you know, drive the occupants to improve their performance with their own building and kind of move up the rankings across their their neighboring school. So another good thing to drive engagement. I know it takes a lot of effort and a lot of a lot of legwork to drive those those engagement initiatives, especially when you compare it with, you know, a large scale, you know, HVAC renewal project, which you can, you know, a couple of months in one school in the summertime and you can make a really big impact. But those, I think we're really seeing the benefits. It takes a long time to get momentum on those on those engagement initiatives, but we're really seeing the the benefits of it now. I mean, I'll hand it over to Steve if anything else to add there, Steve.
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Ryan. Thanks, Ian. Ian, you're going to be surprised. I'm going to be the most brief one here of all of us. But long story short, Ryan said most of it best for between 17, 18 and 18, 19. It was large, it was a lot of capital investment, LED lighting with controls, boilers, new heat pumps, VFDs, roof roofing, demand control ventilation, all that contributes to our our savings. And as Ryan mentioned about the real-time energy monitoring system, I think that was the first year that I really got a handle on alarming as well and sub-metering. So to be more specific there, I have separate shoulder season, winter and summer alarms for all of our schools. And I've also sub-metered a lot of our portables. I mean, we have 225 portables for only 57 schools. So that's a makes up a lot of our electricity use, lighting panels, vestibule heaters, pumps and motors. And even on the gas side, the heat recovery systems, all that is monitored with the real-time energies or real-time energy monitoring. And I look at that daily and cross-reference with the building automation.
So let me stay on that theme and I'll keep you on the on the call, Steve, so you don't get away with the idea of being the briefest because we are keeping track of the of the of the time. The the biggest difference between the top 20 boards, your three boards in particular, and the top 20 boards compared to the other 52, we found intriguingly was not the proportion of schools that made savings. It was the avoidance of increases, like the top 20 would, if you took the average of of the schools that recorded increases bigger than 5% in electricity, gas in total. Those numbers for the top 20 are dramatically less. And the further you get down the chart towards the 50, 60 and 70 boards, that's the big effect. So the reason you guys are successful has got more to do with what you didn't do than what you did do. And what you didn't do was allow people to have that creeping increase is again to 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 allow a damper to fail and not notice it or to allow a service contractor to switch and they're handing you it into into manual and then forget to turn it back or to allow caretakers to reset because the principal's leaning on them to, I want it warmer in here. How would, and if you look at Holton Catholic within there, you pretty much, you've got straight greens where you avoid increases. What would you at this point, and given that we're all going to be working on this for for some time to come, what would you attribute that to right now? I know it's some of what you've said already, but what are the key factors to avoiding increases, which is where the biggest success comes from?
I think, Ian, that the biggest for us is the dedicated energy management team, building automation on all of our schools and having, like I said, that team that constantly is looking at the operation of the schools and making sure that they are, you know, if there's, if there are problems that they are looked at as as quickly as possible. We keep up on our preventative maintenance in both the schools and the portables. So kind of that kind of goes hand in hand. And, you know, to, you know, wrap a ball on that, the sort of the, generally speaking, the continuous oversight of the operation of our schools, right? So I would say as far as strategy goes to prevent increases, on a general sense, that would be it.
And I'll same question with Bruce Gray.
Yes, so for us, one of the items, we had a couple, you know, a couple of our locations that were frequent flyers for for making adjustments. So what we actually did on one of those facilities, we actually set up an alarm system or the BAS system. And I won't say which type to avoid any type of BPS compliance issues. But it actually sent me an email that it said, hey, this facility, there was an adjustment made to this set point. And it would trigger then me rather than having to go and look for, look for the issue or look for the change. To actually then I could have a phone call right away saying, hey, I noticed you adjust your school from instead of the standard 21 degrees, you bumped it up to 24. You know, what's going on? And then I could come there and have a further discussion if it was an education standpoint. Or or was there something else going on that would really trigger an immediate response around, you know, what's the issue? Would we need rectify something, you know, on the on the method side or something on the machine side that we had to fix?
Excellent. So I'm going to close this discussion in a moment with going back to our number one for 2021 with Ottawa Catholic. But Gillian, do we have questions from the floor that we we should be weaving in at this point?
Yes, I have two. First is what are the heating and cooling set points used by the top performing boards?
It's good, my good, all three of you speak to that? Not at the same time?
I can speak to that. Our guidelines have the operational set point of 21 degrees for heating. We try to, we try to slowly ramp that up. So in the fall, you know, we start out maybe a 19 degree set point and and escalates to 21 in the dead of winter. And our cooling set points are 24 degrees during occupied time. We try to run tight schedules on occupancy, you know, we attended a lot of conferences, a lot of different discussions about running, running heating and cooling in the evening. But, you know, we really try to stay to a student occupied schedule on our on our heating and cooling set points. Our occupied temperatures are make setback of probably 17 degrees in the winter and 26 or 27 degrees unoccupied set point in the summer on cooling.
And Al? Yeah, I just want to echo some of what Paul said, set points relatively the same. When we go into unoccupied mode, we actually allow our buildings to go down to 16 in the winter. An unoccupied cooling actually allows it to go up to 30. We are considering changing that just to prevent any type of humidity levels or just trying to control that a little bit better. But during the, you know, I have to take a step back, 2018, 2019, during that time, that's what our set points were set up.
And Brian for Holton Catholic?
I can answer that, Ian. Ours are very similar to Paul's. I would only say that we're probably a little bit lower on our setbacks for cooling just because of where we are here and the humidity and everything like that. So I don't have an exact number here for you, but we might be a degree less on the setback for cooling.
Okay, the other question, thanks, Steve. The other question, Gillian?
There's a question about boiler replacements. See a great deal of boiler replacements. Are these condensing boilers? Are you looking at effective return temperature control to keep these units condensing and operating at optimum efficiency?
Who thinks they've done the most boiler replacements over the over this kind of timeline? And let's just get one response to that if we could. Steve, could you pick it up?
Yeah, sure. We've done quite a number of condensing boiler retrofits over the last four or five years. I think that year particularly, we had one or two high schools where we had the condensing boilers. I missed the first part of the question. Can you repeat it though, please?
Certainly. It was that we see a great deal of boiler replacements. Are these condensing boilers? Are you looking at effective return capital control to keep these units condensing at optimum efficiency?
So the the short answer is yes. That would be more of a probably a question that we better answered by our building automation team. But I do know that we struggled a little bit with the condensing temperature on a couple of our condensing boilers and the return temperature. As far as I know, we got those worked out sort of in that, I think it was the year before this, 2017, 18, so that we, but, you know, each each school is not always made the same. And largely, these are on our heat pump schools. So the return temperatures weren't as weren't as difficult to manage as they were in some of our other HVAC terminal, terminal types.
That's very useful. Let me conscious of of time here, let me just try to summarize a couple of things. I think last weekend, just now, we've, we've heard from you. So an interesting and normal question from the audience around set points. And I think when you responded to that, schedules are more important. But that that I was getting things switched off has more impact than whether it's plus or minus one degree Celsius on on set points. So that's an observation. And then again, I'll ask all three of you to have a final kind of a quick summary thought of the words you want ringing in our ears when we go home after this. The the other one was staying on top of things. So I think what I heard from all of you is you stay on top of this. You've got a handle on all of your on fairly large building portfolios. You've got a handle on all of them. The right people have the right information to get there. But I think what we've heard from you is Holton Catholic is working with real-time monitoring. I think what we heard was Ottawa Catholic has it just in the high schools. But I believe, Paul, you mentioned that it's it's not a key part of the strategy right now because you need resources to to read the things. Bruce Gray has building automation technology in there, but all three of you, Holton Catholic is inclined to let the building automation system run the show as opposed to having active involvement in that area by caretakers where Ottawa Catholic, the active involvement of the of the caretakers is sort of the central strategy. It's you, you invest in having them informed. So we're struck by the, there's no one approach, but the ultimately all that matters is that you're on top of things and the degree to which you use technology and the degree to which you you deploy people is that, could you, could you just each of you, maybe Al first and then Steve or Ryan? And then finally with you, Paul, just give a couple of words on that as to your kind of core philosophy in this area about how do you stay on top of things to get those great not making increases results?
Yeah, as I mentioned, so daily I'm in the building automation system checking for anomalies. But also I do, we did try some of these alarm systems to to kind of trigger trouble, trouble spots, trouble locations. I think the big message for me Um I I think the big message for me would just be, you know, first of all, make sure your data is right. Make sure your equipment's running, you know, properly. Um all too often, you can go on a roof and find that a belt, you know, a belt's flipped off or broken and. And people are wondering why the air isn't running or or why the unit isn't running. Um so, you know. Buildings were designed to run a certain way. Make sure you can maintain them to run that way. And and when you, when you upgrade something, you know, make sure your investment considers um. Energy conservation. Um don't just, don't just fix your aging piece of equipment, you know. Maybe take it to the highest level you can that you can afford, obviously.
And Holton Catholic?
I can jump in there. I I I know um, you know, Steve talked about our 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 energy team and our building automation team. Uh I mean, uh uh we're kind of a medium sized, maybe medium large board with almost sixty schools, but. Um we are, we are a pretty small team when it comes to facility management. Our our building automation team is is one person. Our energy management team is one person, it's Steve. Um but our uh, you know, they all kind of sit in the same, where we're back when we used to be in person, uh that all sit in the same area. They really work well together. So. Well, it is, you know, kind of dedicated staff looking at each of those areas. Uh they really work well together. They're they're, you know, in touch on projects. Our our construction team is also one person for leading construction projects as well, but they really kind of bounce things off each other. Uh and they, you know, really get along well and and work well together. So um when you can combine kind of the energy management with the the operations of the building. And then into the into the renewal and construction piece as well, uh they really kind of feed off each other and uh and and kind of drive, they're all pushing in the same direction. Uh which has really helped us uh see these these great results that you see here today.
Good to hear. And Paul, last word to you.
One thing we did several years ago and then we've used it as a as a stepping stone is we. We had one year where we were fortunate enough to to have an agreement to uh to withdraw one elementary head caretaker and one secondary head caretaker. To work centrally on different strategies for energy conservation. Um so we had them tour around the our our schools, uh set operational practices for each building. We we made written uh written instructions for the for the building operators at all of those schools. Um and then, you know, we we've trained on those on those uh. Parameters over and over again as caretakers move around the board, you know, and our organization caretakers are allowed to uh. To relocate uh based on vacancies. So we don't, we often have turnover, but we have, we have operational guidelines for for site specific. Uh as projects are are implemented and equipment is renewed, then we we do our our best to. Ensure that there is training provided by from the project. Contractors and the project officers need to organize that and make sure that the the big head caretakers know what was installed. You know, whether it's been uh implemented with a standalone controller or it's been uh connected to our building automation system. But we, you know, we really try our best to ensure that the uh the building operators understand how the school works, what the what the. The best operating parameters are. And then if something is replaced, then, you know, we provide the training to them. Is, you know, it it's uh maybe aspirational, but we are a a little bit hands off where we we set these uh. Programs in place and we monitor them through our our meter readings and our and uh our different building automation systems, but. As I had said earlier, you know, we rely on the building operators to to operate the building. So we we're not doing a central control. We. You know, we we've created, tried to investigate a culture and and, you know, continue to foster that. I think I'm sure people are tired of hearing about it and and it's always. Interesting to find new ways to develop, to deliver the same message, but you know, uh it it again, this uh opportunity to be. Number one of the problems will give us a little bit more ammunition to hopefully carry on for another year with this.
That is perfect. And with all three of you, the results speak for themselves. So uh Jillian, any other questions we need to field now or shall we pick?
Um we do have three questions, Ian. Uh do we have time for those?
Uh we we may not. Do you want to just read them out and we'll decide whether to field them now quickly or to respond after the webinar?
Okay. First is how much of a challenge is it to maintain good air quality, i.e. CO two percentage while keeping temperature in good control? The second is how do boards handle partial occupancy periods, i.e. only one or two staff in the building? And the third is how much involvement support is received for the director's office and or the superintendents of your board? How important has this been?
Okay, so that's between the three of those, the two of them relating, I think, to the current COVID situation. And we did have the uh. The webinar uh last summer a around that subject, which covered some of that. But uh those three subjects would use another webinar today. So yeah, let's uh let's pick up on those. After the fact, I I think I just, I want to be conscious of people's time. So you you have my only closing thoughts to all four of you. I thank so much again for doing this, that uh, you know, great credit to. Uh to the results that you're showing here. I I believe you're an inspiration certainly to us because this is why we do this. And uh and hopefully to other school boards and uh, you know, again, thanks for taking the time out, not just today, but last week to uh. To share your insights and your expertise with everybody. This has been absolutely superb. This is everything I hope for from this session. So thank you again. Let's um as as kind of the 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 final step of this step back for a second from uh. From uh from the immediate results of the top school, the top uh energy performing school boards report to uh. To what Sustainable Schools has been doing and is 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 intending to work on in the coming year. The um you'll recall the September second uh webinar last year. That uh we put on with Ashray and at the time I uh and and we revisited that before this session. And pretty much everything was covered there as a big deal and the reality that particularly ventilation systems. Are going to need a lot of attention on a go forward basis. The government's put some money into upgrading those systems. But there's a lot more work to be done and that's one of the. Uh the areas of focus that Sustainable Schools has on a go forward basis is what does safe return to school look like? And over time, what do we need to be doing to upgrade our air handling systems to. Be better able to respond to health requirements, but also to ensure that we're respecting. Uh greenhouse gas emissions because that climate crisis is not too far behind. So remind everybody, you can see the. The proceedings from that session, they're still up on the Sustainable Schools website. Please uh do go take a look. And if you want to get caught up, I I thought just the Q and A coming out of that session alone was gold. So uh. Uh that was a big focus for us last year. Uh over the the winter of twenty 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 one, uh we were really happy to work with Enbridge and the ISO on. Running uh action planning charrettes, turning these metrics that we've been looking at today into. Specific action plans, we had a kind of a cool template that was developed, which actually did address which measures would also help with the. With safe return to school as well as helping with energy use and emissions. Those charrettes were completed with six boards, five schools for each of those six boards. And you can expect to see a report coming out um within the next three or four months, I would say. Um summarizing the results coming out of that. So as everybody's looking at the energy profiles coming out of the Sustainable Schools reporting. How do you take that information, choose your high poten- high savings potential schools? And develop specific action plans of the, like the low hanging fruit. Uh where the big economic returns and the big environmental returns are being found. So that was a. A very productive area of activity with six of you, six boards from the uh this group. Where we're uh heading right now is is two kind of key areas. One is driven by what we looked at a moment ago, which is these. Interesting variances within individual boards between number of schools. Showing savings and number of schools showing increases, the net and what that says about operations, maintenance and management practices. So. Our intention is to do more work uh along those lines. We're obviously talking to funding groups about. Uh about packaging that into a way that would be generally beneficial and we. Undoubtedly, we'll be asking some of you boards to uh to help us with some of that work, to participate in in some of those activities and uh. And we'll, of course, be feeding them back the results with a view to, again, focus on outcomes. With a view to accelerating the take up of big emissions reductions across all schools. Uh within Ontario and then using that same approach in other jurisdictions. The other big focus is around low carbon infrastructure. That's been said a couple of times. So whenever we hear boiler replacement, we're always. Wondering, was that the right technology solution, knowing that by twenty thirty? Our emissions have to be way down and by twenty fifty, we have to be at net zero. So we're spending a lot of time uh with industry and with school boards and with building condition assessments. Thinking through um when you've got funding to renew infrastructure, should you be doing like for like or is. Other better solutions that should be adopted if we're, and it's not if, because there's no choice. In order to meet the uh the climate goals, the emissions reduction goals that have been set, which affirm. What are the best approaches to project funding, to project development, to capital planning? Um to lead to those results. So over time, if you like, the infrastructure across the province is marching steadily. Towards low carbon and net zero futures. So these are the areas we have been into. These are the areas we're into right now and these are the areas you'll hear more from. Uh more about and where we will certainly be looking for help. Whenever we talk about looking for help, uh um Enbridge and the ISO are such good partners for us and good partners. For you folks too. So please do contact them. They're very familiar with everything that we're doing and uh and are very. Uh interested and capable to feed off the energy profiles that you can obtain directly from. And uh from Sustainable Schools and and help you translate that again into action plans, into projects, into real specific deep. Energy and emissions uh reductions. So uh in closing, once again, thanks to everybody who's helped. To make this thing, uh this 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 webinar and this report possible. Uh if you are interested in looking at your board's ranking and the detailed results. Would be very happy to forward that to you and you contact Kat here at the address that you see. Uh down below, uh take the time to go visit the Sustainable Schools website. There's lots of cool content on there that we think is useful. And once again, thanks to uh to Armstrong and I I think again, over the coming years, the role of industry. Um it's fair to say a good part of the technology that will be part of the low carbon future for schools. Uh is still under development and we access that through excellent companies like Armstrong that are willing to share with us. Um what they're up to and engage with us about what we're seeing on the energy profiles from buildings and where. Technology is needed and where technology can be applied. So I think again, you'll hear a lot more in next year's report. Around the big tent idea of industry players stepping up to be part of all of this. Not just because it's business for them, but because they genuinely believe in in the goals and the and the needs around climate uh. Climate change action over time. So once again, thanks to uh to 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 Armstrong for. Uh for for helping put this event on today. So that's all we have for this year. We uh say we'll pick up on the Q and As and we'll respond. Uh where we can. And uh everybody, please keep working on everything you're doing. I hope you find the profiles that we provide useful. And they can take action and that you'll be there among the top savers when we do this again next year. So. Thanks, everybody, and uh have a wonderful day.